Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting order. Invite everybody to please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Jim Dambek.
Here.
Jim Nelson.
James Shiloh.
Here.
Ellen Davy.
Here.
Michael Vito.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Chris Smith.
Steve Nelson asked me to announce that he regrets not being able to attend. He was given the last minute assignment to do a presentation in another town on behalf of his work, so he's hoping to join us a bit later in the meeting. Are there any changes to the agenda as per call?
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
Yes.
Salute.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Davy?
Yes.
Davido?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Shiloh?
Yes.
Dambek?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board? Did you see anybody?
Would you like to go up and talk?
Yes.
Sure.
All right.
Be brief.
State your name.
You would state your name and address, and we have three minutes.
Okay.
My name is Jill Mannheim. I live at 1781 C.L. Hudson Street in Sycamore. I have a daughter this year in kindergarten at North Grove. One of her schools is hard. She loves going to school. I'm really just here to be a presence for myself, my husband, and for all the other parents out there that are Metcalfy with things that are going on right now. Born and raised, my maiden name is Metcalf. Went to school with your son, your daughter, and your son as well. Just really frustrated right now with considering moving. It never in my lifetime ever thought I would consider moving out of the town that I was born and raised in. I want my kids to not have to wear masks. I want all my friends' kids not to wear masks. They don't work. I pray to God you guys do not put a vaccine clinic in these schools. That'll absolutely break my heart. I already see it happening in Illinois. I don't know, just guys, you gotta really fight for our kids. We love our kids, we want our kids safe. We understand that we don't want this virus being spread around, but the things that are happening in this world are not bad enough. Vaccines aren't working, masks aren't working. You just have to come together. Please just continue to include us. I'm a mother of a seven-month-old. That is why I'm not vaccinated. Seven-month-olds cannot have vaccines, so it will pass through my breast milk. Sorry for TMI. But now I'm not allowed to go in my own daughter's classroom. I was a teacher. I quit my job to be a stay-at-home mom so I could be in her classroom, and now I cannot go in her classroom because you guys are making that rule and you're not making it present that I can be in there. I've had to virtually read into the class, which has been great. Mrs. Dyer is amazing. Now she's made that out for everybody else, which is awesome, but it's not fair. Why can I not go into my daughter's classroom? Why couldn't my husband, who's a state trooper, couldn't bring his squad car out front to give a presentation to a community helper? That was ridiculous. We're outside, but it was okay for running for the Hawks to do their program outside with all those kids and all those parents. That didn't matter. So please, let's make a difference.
Is there anyone else who...
I'm Rachel Lulowski, 1607 Meadowbrook Court, Sycamore. So I agree with everything she just said. I will just say that, don't need to beat a dead horse. But my biggest thing is the buses. We all understand there's bus driver shortages. That's fine. Things happen. That's fine. It's the communication that's the issue. My daughter's bus has come at 8:06 every single morning since the beginning of the school year. One day, maybe two weeks ago, did it come. By 8:15, I called Transportation Department, and she was like, "Oh, no, your bus schedule's 8:17." I'm like, "I'm on parent portal right now. It says 8:06." It was cold that day. There are some kids who, they get dressed themselves. I know these girls are home by themselves in the morning, freezing because they didn't know the bus was gonna be that late, and they get out there at 7:55. Come again to Monday, same thing happened. Then it went back to 8:06. Now Monday, once again, it was late. No communication, no emails. I've sold, "Oh, it was supposed to go over out over the forty weekend." Didn't happen. "Oh, it's supposed to come out." It went out last week. No, I got the email today after I called yesterday that your bus schedule is gonna change to something. I don't care that it's changed. It's the communications. You have to communicate to the parents, plain and simple, before you change things. That's it. I'll yield my time to anyone else.
My name is Lindsay Simons. My address, 5490 West Claire Road in Claire, which is the last house in Sycamore School District. I come before you today in three different roles. My first role is that of a community member. Since 1991, I have proudly been a Sycamore Spartan. Graduating class of 2000, Mr. Dambek, you handed me my diploma. Mrs. Davy was my guidance counselor. We moved to this area as I was entering fourth grade, my brother entering second grade, because my parents wanted us to have the best education. My mom, furthering her education at NIU, we moved from Lindenhurst, Illinois, chose Sycamore because of the schools, as opposed to surrounding communities, because that's their dream. My parents' dream was for us, for their children, to have the best education. That's any parent's dream, is to have the opportunity to have the best education. My second role, I come to you, before you, is that of a parent myself. Much like we've, I just said, my dream as a parent is for my children to have the best education. I moved away from Sycamore for a short time, not far, because I knew, once I had children, that I was going to have my roots back in this community. My dream for my children was to have the best education, and that is what Sycamore was going to provide for them. My third role, I've come to before, is a teacher in training. I'm currently enrolled in the elementary education program at NIU. The relationships that I've built with the teachers, with my friends over the years, has really torn on my heart that teaching is what I want to do, and I want to be a teacher in Sycamore School District. My concern as a community member, I've never seen this happen to the educators in our community, especially after the last year that they've had. As a parent, my dream is for my children to have the best teachers and the opportunity to have the best teachers and the best education. And as a teacher in training, I'm scared at what is happening because it's also my dream to be a teacher in this community. Why do our teachers not have a contract? Why are their teachers leaving our district when this is something that I desire to be in? Do I need to change my dream? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to address the board?
Will someone yield their time to me?
No.
Rosa Fandine, 22 Salmonak Street. I yield my time to Diana.
Diana Melchon-Hajek, 2221 Maggie Williams, Sycamore.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the board? Well, thank you for your comments, and we'll take those under consideration. Next item, communications, correspondence, informational items, letters and newsletters. Lot of information about the Google Sessions. More states toward regulation coming our way. FOIA requests? There were some. Thank you, Carol. Not sure what this is. Board Member Appreciation.
Well, before we move on, I do wanna make a quick comment. November 15th, I believe, is National School Board Member Appreciation Day, and at this time of the year, it's our opportunity to thank you for your service, volunteer service to the school district. I think Mr. Franks and his presentation might touch on this as well, but thank you for all that you do. It's a tough job. You guys know that, and many of you have been on the board for a long period of time, some are a little bit newer, but on behalf of the staff, the administration, and community, thank you for everything that you do. I did not arrange for the gifts. I'm not gonna steal. Kathy Snunder, she took care of that. I don't have that kind of savvy, but thank you very much. Appreciate all that you do.
It's a privilege to serve, and we try to do our best always. I know we can't please everybody all the time, but we do try to do what's best and do try to provide the best education we can for our children and look forward to keep on working to do that. It's not always an easy job, so we'll keep moving forward, one step at a time. Next item is committee reports.
I attended the Spartan Senate on Friday. Steve was there actually as well. We had a nice conversation about dress code, some great comments, just kinda circulating. Talked about, a little bit about grading policy at high school and just some ideas there that were kinda kicked around. Again, just an excellent opportunity for parents, teachers, students to convene in a setting and talk about topics that Tim Carlson ran that meeting really well. This is the second meeting of its kind. It meets on, I believe, the first Friday of every month, and it meets at 7:15 in the Sycamore High School Library. You have to be on a roster to attend, so if people are interested in attending as stakeholders, you should reach out to Tim Carlson, and he can get you on that. But I'll be there at every meeting, and again, just great ideas, opportunities for the community to discuss things that are relevant and pertinent to them.
Any other committee reports? Thanks, Michael. Next item then is Assistant Superintendent for HR, Educational Programs Report. Excited to be in North, back in the schools again, with a lot of staff here as well. Mr. Franks is gonna bring us up to speed on what's happening in North, so, Mr. Franks?
Welcome, everybody. Appreciate you guys coming and giving us a little bit of your time this evening. First and foremost, it is our honor here at North always to have a November meeting, which aligns with your Board of Education Appreciation Day. And so, I know, I, looking at a lot of faces here, I've been here over two decades, and I wanted to say that over this time, yes, Chris, Brent, that's a long time, right? We started a long time ago.
Yes, indeed.
So through that longevity, I feel like this board has always been really good listeners. You always feel like you're supportive to our staff. You drive the innovation that we have here and the conversations, and we're always looking at the whole child, whether that's looking at, not just breaking things, but how we can offer a full experience to everybody, whether it's CTV or other experiences. So I know that there's been a lot of difficult decisions over the last few years, for sure, but we do appreciate your time and efforts. So please, we have our staff, a small token there in front of you, a nice caramel apple from the professional, so hopefully enjoy that. It's part of the appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So as last spring, my building leadership team and I started meeting about the next year and what we should do to kind of build some momentum, we wanted to have some sort of theme that was going to help us both empower our staff and help them move forward. And so, after that exhausting year, we felt what better way to remind ourselves of what we're doing and how awesome we are and how we can push ourselves than the theme of level up. And so, I'm gonna be talking to you tonight for the presentation about how we're leveling up in the course of the year. So first and foremost, our relationships, our opportunities. Our students are in building, and that's fantastic. We love that connection with them. As it is and every year, we want to make good relationships with our students, and so that's been necessarily a focus for us this year as well, even more so on an intentional level. We have grade-level buddies. We have that kinda meet and talk with each other. We also are working on social problem-solving and social emotional learning. It's exciting that North Schools for the first time has a full-time social worker, and so choosing to be able to provide our staff with some tier-one support, as well as offer some of that assistance to kids who might need it. We're also using our second step and our core values from Strategic Design to kind of support that SBL piece. Above all, I think one of the things that we are really excited about are some of the experiences that have returned. Definitely Performance Music, Battle of the Hooves, our star squad, which is our kindness keepers of our building, our crossing guards, and our fifth graders who do our pledge for us every morning. Just having those opportunities back has been a great relationship builder. Also leveling up instruction. Along with the core curriculum, the first few months have always been, you know, trying to get to know our students, but it's also about this year, building stamina and grit. Our kids came to us with just a little bit less stamina maybe than they had in the past, and so just trying to reinforce with them in taking chances, giving them effort, working through multiple attempts. That's okay, don't worry about that. And then overall, just having a growth mindset. I'm really sorry, yeah. Additionally, providing consistency and creativity. So in order to do some of these activities or the things that we've always done, we had to look at it a little different, right? So in our fifth-grade classrooms, they're doing standing meetings because that's just another way of turning and talking, but that keeps that social distancing. In our other areas, we have, you know, creative things that are helping our students get their interest levels going and working through some of these adaptations that we've had in some other places. This year, I think you've already heard several times already about our win implementation. So we're building on that instructional momentum. We're gathering, analyzing, and problem-solving through our data processes. Our students are in small groups. They're learning lots of great independent learning skills, as well as our teachers are working with those kids and responding to needs based on those specific skills or essential standards. Now, I'm not up here to tell you today that it's a perfect system and it's working great, but it's in process, and we're seeing lots of good success already. There are lots of growing pains, I will say, but our key focus is with any new age calendar initiative, just making sure we're taking and feeding that and trying to process through that, working on systemic changes as we move forward. Our next area is professional practice. So our instructor, instructional leaders in this building and staff are working on focusing on collaboration, working together for that common purpose. We're valuing that time that we have with our peers, for navigating the newer difficult situations, and gives us an opportunity to really come to that common language and a common vision. I'm a big proponent of personal balance and also personal professional development. So you'll hear me often encouraging my staff to take a little time for themselves, just so they can refresh and restore and put that new person they're gonna have when they get back. It's really gonna help the classroom setting. We also need to build our personal capacity. I told my staff last spring about the AMA story. I don't know if you have heard that before, but there was a gentleman who I heard about on the radio, just having a really hard time diagnosing MS, and he really wanted to look at it from a new perspective, right? So he decided that he was gonna try something that he's never tried before, and that was making an AMA. So he then made an AMA. He was very refreshed with that, was proud of himself, and then decided that his life's work as it was meant to remain. He didn't have any days remaining, so he wanted to make sure that he kind of pushed this message out into the world. Go find what you're making your AMA film. So if you really wanted to learn how to play guitar, or if you wanna make a key score, you wanna paint paintings, you really should go out and do that because that's gonna really invest in yourself. So we talked about that and how it's important to do that. And then also our networking piece. Engaging professionals, I love this year, has been fantastic, and with different groups of people is also a huge benefit. We don't just have that same core PLC every day, but we have different variations of that as we go throughout the month. Our next piece we're leveling up is our community connections. You know, just trying to make consistent communication happen across our high elementary buildings, bringing back some featured events like our book fair, which is in person, which was wonderful, having our fall festival. You can see we have 300 pumpkins down there for kids to come grab and decorate, which was great. And then, of course, everyone's favorite elementary activity, Halloween. Being able to bring that back in its revised date, I would say. Also getting back in the community. We're doing field trips. We've had some fourth graders go uptown and give presentations on their famous buildings. We also have first graders go to Russell Woods. So just getting back into our community has always been so gracious to support us. Trying to get some guest speakers if that's appropriate, and then having parent-teacher conferences, right? So we had those virtual last year, which was fantastic, but this year we have an option for people. We have an option for people to come in and visit with their teacher, or the fantastic thing that we did is allow another option of virtual, so people can have that choice. For us, building that community connection is huge and is very important, especially with other outside organizations like Sycamore Education Foundation, Roderick, and other places like that. Leveling up our momentum and future focus. So when we sit down, we talk about collecting staff feedback, the data from our Five Essentials survey, state and local test scores. We're paying in on some of these items over the next little bit. Filling our vacant positions. We know that this is the district thing, initiative, for sure. We definitely have some key positions here at North we're looking to fill. Moving win time forward, we're still in an implementation phase, but we're also starting to plan for what the sustaining phase is going to look like. So making sure we're taking in all that feedback, trying to make some changes as they are going to be rewarding, both for our staff and for our kids, and also looking at how we can sustain this over a greater longer period of time. At North, we wanna make sure that we are focusing in on some academic growth in our math assessments. Let's just specific focus on vocabulary numbers. We found that in our last scores, and we wanna make sure that that's kind of at the forefront. Re-engaging our family in schools. We have great supportive parents. We wanna make sure that we're able to provide opportunities for them to be involved. Expanding our opportunities for students. We have some great things that are going on already, but just making sure that we have some other additional pieces in the future. And driving with a purpose, making sure all of our staff has a collective understanding of why we're doing what we do and know the bigger picture. If you know anything about me, I'm all about gratitude and celebration. I really, really appreciate all of the things that people do to get us where we are, and I know this is a big machine and takes every part and piece, and so every November, I like to make sure that I take my two minutes to thank lots of people. I know it's risky to thank people individually, so I won't do that, but obviously the Board of Education for giving us some guidance and direction. Our transportation team, our food service, our communications, all of those pieces have been integral in getting our kids not only here, but getting information out. Mark Extremin and his team have been fantastic, and if you go out in the parking lot tonight, you'll see one of the great things that happened this summer is we got some parking lot lifts, which was huge. So nice repave in the parking lot. We got some root work done as well. We're not seeing any leaks at the moment, so that's fantastic. So kudos to him and his team. Our MTSS coordinator reading and math specialists are fantastic. Our instructional coaches have been so instrumental in helping us bring this process of win together and building that capacity in our future, and we couldn't do that without them. This administration team, the people I work with every year, are fantastic, and a special shout-out to the elementary team because we talk multiple times a week, if not every day, about how we can keep these initiatives going and also help each other out. Our students and staff, for sure, I'm sorry, our students and families, for sure, are very supportive and we need to thank them for all the work that they're doing to keep these processes working. Our health staff is doing a fantastic job, and above all, the North staff is fantastic. I have to thank them from the bottom of my heart about all the things that they do. They make me so proud. I would like to share that with you every day. I could bring them up one at a time, and I can tell you something I'm proud about, something they've changed or something they did in the last year or two that's challenged them, but that made them a kind of rewarding experience. But their relentless spirit for doing what's right, my kids, navigating this ever-changing road that we're on, and getting results, to me, I just have to make sure that they know how much I appreciate them. As we continue to level up, this is our collective piece here, is the commitment of value that everybody brings to our table. We like to make sure that everybody has a voice that we're listening, so I think that that's something that North is really good about. That's been a legacy that's been here for a long time, and we like to continue that. And that's the presentation for North. Any questions?
Mr. Franks, you talked about the win implementation having growing pains, and I wanna dive into the weeds, and I'm not looking for particulars, but when you say that, is it really just an implementation, or is there something that we could do to make it a better thing? An easier...
So I think what you're doing already is by supporting some of these positions that we have has been fantastic. I think having time to implement win without some of these key staffing personnel to support those pieces, we would not even be as far as right now as we are today. I think Molly Tucker is doing a fantastic job trying to bring this MTSS process forward, as well as trying to provide some streamlined pieces that we've been looking for for a while. So I think supporting from that end has been fantastic, and we continue that, I think we'll work out some of these other pieces.
Are you guys going to be able to bring back your fifth graders, don't they do breakfast at the end of the year, beginning of the year with seniors?
Yes. So, you know, last year we had that, you know, the opportunity to bring them back when there wasn't kids in the building, so we're all looking at kind of how that can work. But yes, we're putting everything on the forefront of trying to return in some capacity because it's important for those kids to come back.
So you talked about early on in your presentation about building stamina for your students. Do you see progress there? Is that happening?
For sure. I mean, I think if you were to walk by our kindergarten classrooms in any given year, you'd see a little bit of controlled chaos. But if, you know, this year, it just was a little bit more so, as kids were trying to learn how to be a student again, or what it looks like to walk in a line, or, oh, this is how you wash your hands, or even our field trips, kids were on a bus for the very first time, so just like, whoa, the novelty of a bus, and we don't put our windows all the way down, and things like that. So, but if you walk by the halls now compared to then, it's ten times better. I would say there's probably some work to do in some places, and I think the staff would probably echo that, but they are making a lot of progress, and I think that's, again, a test to our teachers, working so hard on those pieces, we're trying to give them those opportunities.
Thank you very much. Thanks to your staff and to you for hosting us and for this wonderful hospitality that you're showing. Appreciate that. Before we move on, if, I know there's not a lot of room here, but if you are part of North staff, if you don't mind just standing up so you can be recognized again with the eyes on you. See what you can do. Thank you, Mr. Franks. Thank you, North staff. Next up, we have a technology update with a focus on one-to-one, so we have our Director of Instructional Technology, Roxanne Horton. So we have our Director of Instructional Technology, Roxanne Horton.
Hey, good evening. As you said, Roxanne Horton, Director of Instructional Technology. And I was actually a student in this school when it opened up. I'm going to come back. My own children have gone here, and my grandchildren are going here now, so it's kind of cool. Okay, so tonight I'm going to talk about our technology highlights. I'll start with the elementary schools, move to the middle school, the high school, district, and then Chromebooks, Chromebook update. The picture that you're seeing here is actually some of the win kids in their win session with their Chromebooks. So Chromebooks get used there also. So elementary schools, we now have classroom sets of Chromebooks. Our K1 students are using the touchscreens. Our 2 through 5 students have non-touchscreens. They have touchscreens purchased last year. They're the Lenovo 300E, second gen. And then our 2nd through 5th are using a variety of Chromebooks. As we were getting them in the middle school and the high school, we were pushing them down into our elementary buildings. And we have gotten to the point where we do have a full one-to-one, so we have enough in every classroom. The Chromebooks are assigned to specific students, which in this COVID time, well, actually just any journey time, it's a good idea for those students to have a specific Chromebook that they are using. It also helps to kind of, you know, if they have kind of ownership of that Chromebook, they tend to take care of things better. And if something does break, we pretty much know who we need to go to to find out what happened. Our Chromebooks do allow us anytime or anywhere access. As I said, taking them to win, walk to Marnes, or our 5th graders who go to 6th grade for math, they're able to take those Chromebooks with them there. Even outside, if it's a nice day and they want to log some data, they can take them outside with them. So many other uses that they can basically take them where they go. They're very good for remediation and enrichment. It allows students to continue working on things while teachers work with maybe one-to-one or on small groups. And math testing, that's probably a really big one, because in the past, when they were doing math testing, they had to find time in the lab for the students to go in. And we had a few Chromebook carts, so they could use those Chromebook carts also. But now, this year, they were able to schedule the tests whenever they could in their classroom because they were actually doing it in the comfort of their own classroom. So it's probably even better to be doing a test in a location that they're very familiar with. Our technology specials, our lab setup is much different this year. Last year during remote learning, we took the computers out of the lab, and we moved them into the classrooms for the remote setup, for the teachers for teaching. And so now our labs don't have any computers in them. Well, not a problem. We have Chromebooks in our classrooms, so our students are able to bring those Chromebooks with them, and that's what they're taught on. That's what they're using in the classroom, so it makes sense that we're actually teaching them on the device that they're using in the classroom in their labs. During labs, they're working on things such as digital citizenship and internet safety. We've actually been doing that for several years because we've been required to do so by the state for grades 3 through 12. We do also move it down then to kindergarten, our teachers do. They're using things such as being Internet Awesome by Google, NetSmart Kids, and Brain Pop Jr. They also work on keyboarding and Google applications. Our formal program is Typing Club, which is started in 2nd grade, where they work on keeping their hands on home row. But they do actually start teaching those skills for keyboarding as young as kindergarten with, you know, keyboard recognition. They work on Google applications such as DocSheet, Slides, Classroom. One thing you wouldn't think about is at the beginning of the year, they help the students to get rid of their former classrooms or archive their former classrooms so that they are only looking at their current classrooms. They also work on coding. Computer Science Education Week is coming up, where students will actually be able to practice at home their problem-solving skills through different levels of coding. And they work on problem-solving skills using the method of ask, imagine, plan, create, improve, and communicate. And when asked about some of the highlights in their buildings, one of my tech people said that one thing that's nice about the kids having the one-to-one is that the kindergarten kids can actually log in independently and navigate their device much earlier than before. Typically, they would have to log in for them through the first half of the year, so they're doing better at that. Keep in mind, students are not using Chromebooks all day, but they are a resource which can be used anytime, anywhere to empower our learners to reach their individual potential and become innovative, enthusiastic, lifelong learners. This picture is the picture of Southeast Lab, and those are students with their own Chromebooks then in the lab working. Moving on to the middle school. At the middle school, I'm excited this year that we do have a position for the Instructional Technology Coach. Beth Bitson Rider is, took that position this year. She helps with training, comfort level with, for the teachers on our school district and school and district tools. Those happen one-on-one in a team, the whole department, the whole school. She also does a quarterly newsletter with instructional tips and updates on applications. Instructional coaching, which gives her the ability then to push into the classroom to assist the teachers as they are teaching. And then she's there to assess our technology needs. So if she sees a need, she'll find a way to meet those needs. What's really great about putting Bethany into this particular position is that she was from the high school. So it was really a nice transition for her to move into the middle school, because one of the big things that we were doing this year in the middle school is starting a pilot for Canvas, and Bethany was already doing that at the high school. So it was really a nice fit in that respect. Some of the digital tools that are being used, as I said, Canvas, they're doing a pilot. They started out with 11 teachers, and as happened in the high school, more teachers wanted to join. So they are now up to 15 teachers who are fully using Canvas with their students. Additional teachers have started training on the program, either in person or online. Canvas is a learning management system. Apps are integrated into Canvas while keeping students in one central location while accessing a variety of tools. It integrates with Infinite Campus, which is nice because they can do their grading in Canvas, and they will transfer automatically over into Infinite Campus, so they're not having to put the grades in two different locations. This year, they, well, last year actually, they piloted a program called Formative, and now it's available at the middle school for everyone. It's real-time tracking of student progress. It gives live feedback. It's personalized. It'll track student progress over time against the standards. It allows the teacher to engage the student in a variety of, with a variety of question types, including audio, video, text, images, and uploads. Can also be used for common assessments. So assessments can be given as common assessments, and teams can track the data and student progress as part of their PLC process. Securely Classroom is a great program, whether it is in-person or remote. It allows them to, teachers to monitor the Chromebook screens, which helps keeps our, keep our students focused and on task. The teacher can share their screen with the student's Chromebooks. You can also push websites or URLs out to the students. They can lock and freeze student screens, so if you want to make sure that the attention's on the teacher and not on the device, they can lock it. And for those who might be shy, there's a way for them to ask questions of the teacher without having to ask out loud. EdPuzzle, which is used as a lesson design in a blended learning classroom, so book classroom, station rotations, playlist. Helpful for, it's helpful for review. Paradek encourages students to interact with the lesson, offers real-time formative feedback. And Google Jamboard is a great tool for student collaboration, it's kind of like a whiteboard that students can write on. Some highlights, I just want to push out there on some class coursework. 6th grade is using the Spiro robot, so they're doing coding with these little tiny robots that they can, you know, make move along the line. And the 8th grade classrooms are doing app creation, and you'll see there's four of the apps that have been created on the slide. So there's Whack an Emoji, brings me back to my arcade days as a teenager, with the Whack-a-Mole, Magic 8-Ball quiz app, and a HelloKurPer virtual pet app. So some full apps that they are creating in their, as part of their coursework in the 8th grade. Moving on to the high school. The high school has a full-time instructional technology coach this year, Phoebe Valentine. Last year we had four of them. They were in different subject areas, but they were only a one-hour release. This year they have a full day, she has a, she has a full day release, which really makes more sense, because teachers don't necessarily just need help during that one period. This allows her to help teachers during, anytime during the day. Some of the things she's been doing, a lunch and learn. Once a month, the high school has a lunch and learn which focuses on technology, so a specific tool, idea, slot, or philosophy, anything to do with technology. One-to-one training, so just-in-time learning. If somebody has a problem with technology, she can go in and help them learn how to use it. She can push into the classroom. And it's not just one-to-one, though. They present at faculty meetings, department meetings, and on institute days. It's a great position for helping with the onboarding of new faculty and long-term substitutes because think about all the technology that's in a classroom now, and some departments have specific technology to their department. She's able to help those teachers when they come in, new teachers or long-term substitute, onboard themselves into the classroom and learn that technology. Problem solving, so, you know, if teachers come to her with a problem that hopefully technology can help solve, she'll work on that. One example that she has created is for driver's ed. They created a Google form that the driver's ed teachers fill out after every time a student drives. And then when it's done, it's set to automatically create a report, which is then sent to the parents about that driving session. And she assesses the needs of the high school and acts on those needs. And she does a monthly newsletter. The digital tools are very much the same as what we saw in the middle school, so Canvas, but they are in their second year using Canvas, so all of their teachers are using it. Securely Classroom, EdPuzzle, and Paradek. This year, there is a new, there are new computers in the MacLab, and that's the picture of the MacLab there. The MacLab is used for digital art and Spartan TV. All right, moving on to the district. I gave Steve my outline, and he said he was most interested in the first one, but he didn't want me to give it away until tonight. So tonight he'll learn what the fat pipe actually is. So the fat pipe was installed in October. It is an appliance that load balances our internet traffic. So we have 1 gigabit with NIU, we have 1 gigabit with ICN, and so the fat pipe says, okay, I'm going to send this traffic this way, I'm going to send this traffic this way. NIU's down right now, I'm going to send all the traffic to ICN. So it helps us get out to the proper internet connection. And the switch project. So if you look at that picture there, the box at the very top left, that's the fat pipe box, one box. The rest of that is going to be the switch project. Obviously, that's a little more intensive than putting in the fat pipe, and that's going to happen then during Christmas break. That will put new core switches in every building, which is basically the backbone of our network. Our current core switches are definitely end-of-life, end-of-support, because they are over 12 years old. As part of the district, I do want to say that the employees that I work with are really who make the technology department. I really appreciate everyone in our department. I'm fortunate to work with some really great people, and I truly appreciate what they're doing, as the common theme was. We have also been hit by the fact that we're having a hard time hiring people. So we have two technology positions that were posted at the, in the summer, that never got filled, two certified tech specialists for our elementary buildings. So our elementary technology specialists have really, have been going above and beyond and covering multiple buildings because of that. So I just want to say I really appreciate everybody that I work with in the technology Okay, replacing Chromebooks. So you're probably thinking that, you know, every time I present, I make sure that I'm talking about replacing the Chromebooks. That's because I just really want to make sure that you guys are prepared for when that comes. And so, you know, I'm trying to keep track of what's going to be expiring when. We talked about A U A, the automatic update expiration from Google, and that pretty much tells me when that Chromebook can't be really used anymore. So our N21s, which we have about 100 devices, they actually ended on September 1st. So they're out of the mix now. We were fine, we had enough to cover those, no problem. Our N22s and N23s, our updates are going to end on June 1st of 2022, and I've been keeping you apprised of the fact that that's close to 1,000 devices, and those are elementary devices. Now, I want to say that I've kept the best slide for last, but you might look at me and say, are you crazy? What are you talking about? How could this be that that slide giving you the news that 1,000 of our devices are going out? Well, in June, the federal government had something called the Emergency Connectivity Fund, in which we were able to apply for money which could buy some Chromebooks. Every single one of our Chromebooks that's going out will be replaced with that money because we did get it. My luck at times just became 100% easier than I would have expected. So our next big supply of Chromebooks that will be going out will be going out in June of 2026, and hopefully my successor then will be able to come in front of us. I feel like I've done my job, and I can feel comfortable until 2026 when you're cursing my name for a big number that we have purchased at that time. So that's like, it actually was like, I don't remember for sure, there was 1,300, and then I think the 300 after, so that might be like 1,600 Chromebooks, but... So this picture is from a 5th grade classroom at Southeast. They had just finished a math lesson, and then they were practicing what they had learned during that lesson, while the teacher was then able to go around and help one-on-one and small groups working on that particular concept. Okay, and before I take question, the first picture is from the middle school. Those are lantern boxes created by the middle school students using the CarbEye Create Program and the CNC machine. And the second one is of the Spiro robot. So they were doing coding, and they were able to make the robot go along the line with their code. And then they were also calculating the speed and distance of the Spiro. Any questions?
Yeah, did you order the replacements for 22 yet?
Actually, you know what? Because of that ECF money, we are going to have to do it soon.
It's not just the money. We know how long it takes.
Yeah, yeah. So, but we have to take possession of them by June 1st, so yes, since everybody's giving, since a lot of schools did get that ECF, we do have to order them soon. I did work with the company we're buying them from, and they said, if we buy them now, if for some reason they arrive in January, but we're not ready to use them, they will not start the warranty until we start using them. We have a four-year warranty with them. So at least I won't feel bad about them getting in. And they're not going to last any longer per se, because they expire in June of 2028. So it's not like we're going to lose time on them if we get them sooner.
No, better to have them sooner than not have them.
Right.
You learned that the hard way.
I know that for sure. I couldn't say, I couldn't, I've done that.
You don't want to go there again, though.
Roxanne, I know you and your team have been tracking trouble tickets for when students break them or when they just break spontaneously. Do we have any idea, are we tracking with the lifetime costs on these devices over the seven years we expect them to last? As far as replacement parts, anything that has to be done out of warranty?
No, we haven't per se. I mean, I thought Drew and I had done some checking. I will say the N21s and N22s, we didn't have cases and such on. And we also have a problem with the parts, the camera. We couldn't get them because of the whole COVID part shortage. So I will say that 82% of the N22, no, 82% of the N23s are no longer usable and seven, I'm sorry, not 82%, 82% are still in use. And then 73% of the N22s are still in use. So we do have a lot of parts, I will say. We've been scavenging parts from machines, but I haven't done a cost analysis.
But overall, you still feel confident in the seven-year expected lifespan that we discussed in previous meetings?
I feel like the high school, the ones that have the cases in them, they are lasting longer. I'm hopeful. I mean, I you can't say for sure, because like I said, with the N22s and the N23s, when the parts became not available, that is an issue.
No, yeah, and I expect part of that is just waiting to see, but it'd be nice to stay. We need to stay on top of that for our replacement schedule and know that when we planned at the beginning for seven years, that that is what we're getting. And if all of a sudden 1,000 are dying at year five, then we need to be all changeable.
Yeah, so the N21s, like the N22s and N23s, actually, the N21s are still, a lot of them are still, we're like at 100. We bought 125 to begin with. So they're, they lasted a long time. It's just the fact that they're not updated anymore is why they're basically end-of-life.
Will the replacements have cases then?
Yes. Now, the ECF money did not pay for the cases, so we got to plan that on our own. But hey, you get the Chromebooks for free and the warranty.
Right, if you get some better longevity out of them, yes.
What, what does one of these Chromebooks cost?
So the bundle that we got that has the four-year warranty, the Chromebook, and the Google license is 380.
Okay, and that's a one-time cost?
Yes.
And that's expected to last, that computer, you said, four years?
These will go until 2028, June of 2028.
Oh, so you could, you get a good amount of time. But you're not going to get them until 2022, so, right?
Well, we'll probably be ordering them soon.
Okay, so it's like a six-year run out of like 350 bucks, and it's not bad. It's like the cost of a textbook for you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Superintendents report. Good evening again. Great to be here at North Elementary, like Mr. Ryan said earlier. Thank you Thomas and the North staff for hosting us. I'll start with our mission, empowering all learners to succeed in their world. Our vision, which is to provide an ideal learning experience where students and staff are engaged and want to come back the next day. Some of our core values, trustworthiness, equality, citizenship, responsibility, and collaboration. And then the five questions that our professional learning communities ask themselves and discuss. What do we want students to know and learn? What do students want to know and learn? How will we know if they learn it? What will we do if they don't learn it? And what do we do if they already know it? That brings me to the first of two agenda items. The first has to do with the calendar for the 22-23 school year. As I believe has been past practice, we started discussions about this earlier in the fall. After a discussion, it really became apparent that there were two options that really seemed to be the most viable. Option one, and they're very similar. The two options really kind of center around Christmas break and a couple of institute days. Option one, winter break would officially start on Saturday, December 24th. That means we'd be in school, in session on Friday, December 23rd. Students would return on Monday, January 9th, that's a Monday, after a full week out in January. There would be two teachers institutes at the end of the school year under option one. Under option two, winter break starts Thursday, December 22nd. That's the first day that we are not in session. In other words, the last day that we are in session is Wednesday, December 21st. There's a teachers institute on Wednesday, January 4th, and we come back. Students would return on Thursday, the 5th, kind of ease into the week with a day of attendance on Thursday and then on Friday before the next full week. And there's one teacher institute at the end of the school year. So in option two, those two teachers institutes are split between Wednesday, January 4th and the very end of the school year. So typically what I've done in the past and what we did here was we sent out a survey. I didn't send the survey out, I worked with a couple of representatives from the SDA. And they sent a survey out. It was split almost 50-50. Then we surveyed the administrative staff, and by the time that was over, it was split exactly 50-50. And pretty much left the ball on my court. So we had some discussion, and tonight I'm recommending option two for the following reasons. Option two provides a little bit more travel time for staff and families for winter break. So if they're going to be leaving to see family and trying to get there before Christmas, option two gives them a little bit more time to do that. So I felt like that was a little bit more understanding of that. And it also provides an opportunity for professional development and training immediately following the winter break and then again at the end of the school year. So splitting up those two institute days just seemed to be a little bit better in the long run, better to use of those two days. So we'll lease back into second semester, actually not necessarily second semester, but the second part of the school year on Wednesday, January 4th with the teachers institute and the students on Thursday, January 5th. This is the first reading this evening. I don't believe there's any action tonight. Is everyone getting? So I'll pause here and just ask if there's any questions. No, it's, it'll be back up at the next meeting, so. But there, we'll see what other kind of comments we get. That takes me to item 6.02, which is a facility update. This is really kind of returning to a conversation we had at the beginning of September when we were visiting Southeast Elementary School. Some of this information is going to be new, some of it's going to be reviewed. Tried to stall the best I could so that Mr. Nelson could be with us. I know he's in the way. He texted me a little bit ago. So he will join us. I don't know that he'll be here for this part. Just kind of a reminder, we just, we had some initial conversation about facilities this year on September 14th. It was listed as a future-focused item and really just created some discussion about the current state of our facilities and where we're headed. We revisited that at the Board of Ed and Administrator Retreat last week, last Tuesday evening. The discussion included the state of our facilities, some known work that needs to be done, enrollment trends, and some estimated costs. So just as a reminder, I've included two slides that we looked at on September 14th. These are almost exactly the same with two minor corrections that I'll highlight. This is the same slide, the same table that we saw on September 14th. I've highlighted three columns there where school capacity is given. Capacity is calculated in a couple of different ways. The State Board of Education calculates it one way. It's also calculated in terms of design, design capacity, and then operational capacity. Had a conversation with Steve Nelson this afternoon before his meeting, kind of picked his brain on this. Steve's a school architect. He really recommended in terms of moving forward and looking at capacities of our school. And he recommended using design capacity. Felt like the State Board of Education capacity calculation is typically a little bit higher. That does not mean, however, and I'll come back to this again in a minute, that those numbers are etched in stone to the student. The way space is used in schools can be a little flexible. So Steve recommended that we use that in any conversation moving forward. But also a caveat that when you're looking at those numbers, there's a little bit of wiggle room there, just depending on how the physical space is laid out in each school. So I highlighted one of the corrections here. Okay, I remember one of the board members, I think, caught this, and I appreciated that in September 14th. This table lists enrollment trends, and this is taken using six-day enrollment, 1920, 2021, and 2122. Gives you how the enrollment has changed, and we're not quite back to where we were pre-COVID. We saw a dip during the 2021 school year. We have come up nearly across the board in the 2122 school year. So it lists enrollment on sixth day, operational capacity, and then the difference between operational capacity and that sixth-day enrollment. The enrollment for North, or the difference for North Grove, I had miscalculated back in September. It's actually 113. I had it, I believe, a little bit higher than that. I also had Southeast and South Prairie backwards. So I didn't put a star next to this, but in September, Southeast was listed third, should have been South Prairie. So I've corrected that. The other thing I've done is added a column for percent capacity. So just quantifies it a little bit differently, using that 2122 enrollment on the sixth day, the operational capacity that is still there, and then the difference between the two. So just one additional number to look at. You can see that South Prairie has the low capacity, 65%. Again, there's a little wiggle room here, so we need to keep that in mind as we're moving forward. The middle school is at 86%, West is at 81, North Grove's at 80%, and then we go down. And again, part of our conversation last week at the Board Admin Retreat, Mr. Janisch mentioned this, that how the space is laid out, how it's able to be used varies a little bit, school by school, and how they've been designed and constructed. Each school's enrollment in reference to capacity varies a little bit. I created a slide before I talked to Steve this afternoon, so I listed operational capacity. Again, that was part of the previous slide. Operational capacity is a guide, not necessarily the actual measure of capacity. We've talked about that a couple of times already this evening. The previous tables show that all of our buildings are between 65 and 86% of their operational capacity. That's all seven of the schools. That includes the middle school and the high school. If you just separate the five elementary schools, those capacities range from 65 to 86%. One of the things we may need to look at moving forward is whether or not redistricting the five elementary schools could more equally and equitably balance our K5 enrollment. Not necessarily recommending that this evening, but something I think as we're looking at facilities and as we move forward planning for the future, I think our responsibility is to look at all options. We may not pursue all options, but I think all options need to be considered and discussed as we move forward. Redistricting may need to be one of those. In addition to space, there are a number of facility projects that need to be completed. At the last meeting at the Board Admin Retreat, we talked about health life safety projects. Those are identified by the architect using guidelines from ISBE. They are prioritized by the architects, and they need, and they need to be completed on a timeline consistent with their priority level. So the most urgent projects are on a shorter timeline. Those typically need to be done within a 12-month period. There's a second level that I believe is about the five-year. The third level has to be done within 10. Typically, architects, and I believe ours have done this, they identify projects that don't necessarily need to be done even in that 10-year lifespan, but are things that the district should consider doing as we're moving forward. One of the things I'll also add here is that those health life safety projects oftentimes are basic requirements. So in a school, in order for it to be used and functioning, what needs to be done to keep it up to snuff, so to speak? There are other projects that may need to be considered along the way that are educational enhancements, but aren't necessarily things that are required for health life safety reasons. It's just something to keep in mind. One of the next steps is to finalize the projected costs for any facility projects as we move forward. We need to, so we can determine both how and when they will be completed. Obviously, one additional big issue is, once we've arrived at those final figures, working with our architects, looking at all the projects that are out there, identifying what work needs to be done moving forward, and then how we're going to finance that. And that could be, it's always a little challenging when you look at how you're going to finance large projects. One of the things we talked about at the last meeting that I'll reiterate tonight is that a lot of the facility work last summer and this upcoming summer really focused on our KE buildings. There was work that was done at the high school, but the majority of the focus was on KE. The high school is a much larger facility, and any project there typically is a little bit more expensive because of that. One of the things we need to plan, plan on moving forward is that a lot of that financial, a lot of the financial resources are going to need to be set aside from high school and what needs to be done, what we want to have done, not just for the short term, but the long term as well. So one of the things that we've had some conversations about, in addition with the architects, is what funding mechanisms are going to provide the best opportunities for the school district? Not ready to make any recommendations on that yet tonight, because we don't necessarily have all those all those calculations finalized. So I'm going to pause there. I'm going to ask if there are any questions about the facilities, update, redistricting.
I still have questions about the, how we look at that capacity. I like the recommendation about using the design capacity, but then your next two slides, I'll reference the operational capacity as opposed to the design. And if you look at that design capacity chart, then we've got elementary ranges from somewhere in the mid, I think, 45-ish, 50% for, for example, South Prairie, and I think North Grove comes in at like 99.5% or something like that. And so that, that message tells me that there is something that's a bit more urgent, especially given where we expect the rest of the Grove and Sycamore, at least in the coming years, to be. Just seeing how it was going up around me at the north end. So that, I think, creates more urgency, at least for this discussion about how are we going to deal with that increased capacity? I think we heard from that from Mr. Janisch last week, that he didn't know where they'd put another 30 kids if they, you know, came in and they had opened another section of elementary. So I don't know if anybody else has any views on that, but I think that there's at least, we need to get to the bottom of which, which capacity number we're going to use and what's most appropriate. And maybe a part of that is having the teachers or elementary principals come in and, you know, get kind of some sort of summary view of how they're using their space and what they perceive as available space. And I know we've got, do you know if those capacity numbers, do those, for the student enrollment, does that factor in that we use portions of each building for some special program, like the ABLE program? You know, Oscar occupies some space. We've done partnerships with community entities in the past. Are those usages also factored in?
Existing programs like ABLE, like we've, any district programs where students are attending school, those enrollments are factored in. To the best of my knowledge, those are factored into the numbers that I presented. A community program where students might come in, for example, Oscar, you know, after school, those numbers are included. So the enrollment numbers really are students who are enrolled in our academic programs.
And I know some of those programs, and maybe this is something that Steve can talk to if he shows up, that some of those programs obviously don't have quite the same density that a traditional classroom would. So maybe there's some variation there as far as, well, we had, you know, a traditional classroom, we might have 20 or 30 kids in that space, but because we're running some of these other programs, that space definitely can't convey five or 10, and how does that then shift? You know, where, where those programs can be housed, or how many students, you know, we can add to a, to a site where we have to.
Some of those programs also are limited in terms of the number that they're allowed to have. For example, programs that serve students with special education needs. Some of those more specialized programs have limits on capacity. So also, I mean, there's a lot of complexities here, but that's one of the other things is, you know, we need to find a location for that program that supports it, but is not necessarily going to use a space that's bigger that can be used for a different program. So this is like a huge jigsaw puzzle, fitting all these pieces together. One of the things that, if it's a goal of mine, if we make a kind of a presentation in terms of how to proceed moving forward is, and so I'm going to go back to one of the things you mentioned earlier, was that, okay, which capacity are we going to use? And once we start having, you know, the next conversation where we have a little bit more formal presentation with the board, once we do that, that's the, that's the number we're going to stick with. You know, that, that calculation, that, that design capacity, so to speak. So I had that conversation with Steve just this afternoon, and I apologize that I was still using the operational capacity. But I agree, at some point, we need to pick which one it's going to be, and then we need to stick, stick with that all the way through the planning process.
I think personally speaking, just ideally, if we're looking at learner outcome, I think design capacity would be my preference. I think just ultimately that's what's best for the students. I think that's what's best for a teaching environment is just saying, okay, well, let's operate with what these were designed to do and let's focus on that. Now, I understand there's restraints with that in terms of financial restraints. And then I know the issue then is, if we were going to go that route, then it seems like redistricting would probably be the only way to meet those designed capacity constraints. And so I would just, I'd be interested in going down that route only to entertain what would the, what are the adverse effects of redistricting? What kind of urgency, like if Eric's number, 99% on design capacity is correct? I know you kind of wing it. We were just looking at dumper's quickly. But I mean, that to me says there's a greater sense of urgency than if that's the path that the board wants to take. But ultimately, I'd like to see us try to fall in that design capacity. It's my personal preference, again, based on learner outcomes.
I think the based on learner outcomes is really important. At the end of the day, facilities are constructed to support students and the learning process. Teachers and staff use those spaces for those purposes. So I think it's really important during that process that we're continually focused on all the facilities, support learning, and how they support learners. So I think that's really important.
It seemed like in the past, we had some very detailed analysis about growth projections and about cohort movement and those kind of analyses that we haven't really seen any numbers for yet. So I'd kind of like to see that as well. My recollection is that the growth analysis wasn't just, you know, where growth is going to occur, but when it does occur, you know, what's likely to be the results in terms of, you know, what grade levels students would be at and those kind of things. And that, I think, would be very beneficial to have to help perform an analysis, to make some plans for moving forward.
Yeah, I agree. I haven't seen those yet. I did have some conversation with the city, just on a demographic study that the city did, but you're talking about numbers that would be really useful in our more detailed.
Yeah. And we can do, I mean, I suppose we can do our own study on cohort movement. You know, probably stick together or don't stick together, or whether bubbles are moving through. You know, each year kind of looks a little bit different in terms of...
Other questions or comments for me about facility update?
Don't think so.
Thank you.
Open discussion, future agenda items? Issues, observations, questions? Future agenda items?
I think just a continuation of this, which I probably goes without saying, but making sure that at least in the next couple of months that we're revisiting this and making incremental progress.
I think we need a lot more information because when I hear the term redistricting, I know that brings on a lot of difficult decisions. So I hope we have a lot more information.
Yeah, I'd be forward, yeah. Before we go down that route, we really have to, really need a lot more information.
And I would add, Julianne, to your point, not only is there a lot of information needed, but also a timeline that gives us an opportunity to have conversations, but also an opportunity to get feedback from the community. You're right, those are emotional decisions, and right as so. So we want to make sure that we're having, as we plan, we're planning on a timeline that's going to allow us to do just that.
Other future agenda items? Is there a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment or employment of personnel, negotiations, and imminent litigation?
Move.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Evita?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Brent?
Yes.
Shaddle?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Stambach?
Yes.
All right, so move into executive session. All right, it's 8:56 and we're back in regular session. Is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
Move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call.
Brent?
Yes.
Shaddle?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Evita?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Stambach?
Yes.
Motion clear.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.